It is now six oh four P M. And we will now call the committee to order.
You threw me off the volume, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to our board of directors, to community members, teachers that are in attendance. This evening I have three items on committee. First, and here to present and give us an update and also a look to the future of our gifted program is Ms. Jen Horgan. Jen, as we know, took over a program that had sort of morphed for a little bit of time, and she's done some really wonderful things, her and the students. And so I wanted to give Jen an opportunity to present to the board what she has accomplished this past year. And I think you have even some ideas for the future here. Is that correct? So with that, Jen, I'll give you the floor. Ms. Horgan? Yes, we're going to have you there. Yep. We're going to check to make sure the mic. Yep.
Good evening. It's nice to be here and meet everyone. This is actually my first time attending a school board meeting. I was on vacation when I was hired, so it was all over Zoom. But I'm really pleased to be here tonight, and it's a pleasure working with the children of this great district. I really have been enjoying it this year, and I look forward to the future and getting to know them through the years as they grow and really getting to know the individual child that way. I do have tonight a slideshow that I've put together with pictures and some comments on there, and to just tell you what we've done this year, some things that were the same and some things that are different, and ideas for next year. One of the things that I did was to join another, we belong to the Washington Consortium where we compete with other schools as one of the great enriching experiences of gifted. But we also, there's other groups out there as well. So I joined another group called the South Hills Area Gifted Consortium where we had some additional opportunities. For instance, I had a couple of high school students attend Battle of the Books Literature Festival this year, and that was something new that we offered. Next year, I'm looking at expanding it and not just taking some gifted kids, but other kids that are interested in reading and going to compete at the school. Students also attended the Teen Screen Documentary, The Cure for Hate, where the subject of the film along with the filmmaker was present. And so the students had the opportunity for a question and answer session afterwards, which was a different kind of enrichment than some of the planned things that we had had in the past. I'm going to get started and kind of show the slideshow as we go through, if that's okay, and if anyone has any questions for me about anything. Some of our K through five events that we have, Mingo Creek, that was a science outdoor exploratory that's been in session most years. We take turns planning these events, and that was a great opportunity for the students to experience the outdoor classroom. And they had a chance to do things with science as far as testing water, learning more about nature, trees. They also had technology where they were able to fly drones and see some things about thermal imaging. So it was a really great opportunity for the students. And whenever we do these experiences, I have a class dojo, so I will send the parents videos of their children and pictures of them doing these activities. One of the great things that happened this year, we had two finalists from our elementary schools. The students competed in the Paralyzed Veterans of America Contest. How Accessibility for All was the theme. So we were reading about Stephen Hawking and, you know, what he has had to overcome in life. And within doing that, we paired along that with this poster contest. One of our first graders came in first place for the region. So they had first place for first and second grade. That was Cora Welsh and Baxter Grace for grades three to four. So I was quite amazed that it happened from the same school, one from Claysville, one from Joe Walker. But I was so proud of all of the students who participated. Then McGuffey, we hosted some events this year. So last year, I was a gifted teacher at Claysville for fourth and fifth grade as we had that position split up. This was my first year learning K through 12. And so McGuffey didn't host last year while we were getting used to everything. But I did host the Halloween Primary STEM Challenge. The students did things like build a cauldron that can hold the most marbles. So there was STEM challenges. We had a B-Bot hay maze opportunity where they had to do coding of the B-Bot to get it to be the first to go through the maze, as well as other fun activities. Quiz Bowl, History Bowl was something where we went down to the Heinz History Center in Pittsburgh. There were a lot of other schools that participated. They did a scavenger hunt through the museum where they were using the displays to actively learn more information about the museum in a fun way and working in groups. And then Math 24 for the primary grades, we had two students that won, I can't remember now if it was first, second, or third place, but they, they did win awards for scoring the most individual points when we went to that competition. Oh, it's right there, sorry. So we had one in second place, one in first place. Cora was second, Everett was first. And at this time that I was writing it, we didn't have some of those competitions yet. But I can tell you that we hosted the fourth and fifth grade Lit Fest here at McGuffey, and that was in this room, 105, in the library program. And that was a great experience, too, having the schools come together. The students prepare for the literature festival all year long. I'm preparing right now. I'm on my eighth novel this summer already. I have eighteen to read over the summer to get ready. I absolutely love the literature festival, and it's, and it's great to integrate it, do different things that relate to the books. So for next year, I'm already thinking about for primary K through three, they're going to read about Jane Goodall, and I'm going to take them down to the Pittsburgh Zoo in September, and they're going to learn more about the chimpanzees, you know, see them there in the monkey house. So I like to integrate a lot of that curriculum to involve enriching experiences. So we also have America Bowl is when the students are learning about the states and the capitals and everything grade that goes along with that, presidents, calcio crush or word problems, and the students work together in groups on some of the problems. Other ones, they have to solve individually, and they give awards for both kinds. And then we did an enrichment trip for the younger kids. We went to the aviary at the end of the school year. The older kids were the first school group to do the tour and crawl program at Laurel Caverns. So we were guinea pigs, but had a great time. These are some pictures, Mingo Creek, and we have some pictures there of the PVA award winners there. These, that's the B-Bot hay maze and some of the other activities. There was a Halloween Escape Room in this room where students had to break codes and unlock the box. And one of the things I didn't mention is that the older students in the gifted program are getting leadership experiences. So they, I have my middle school and my high school students volunteers are helping to run the different stations. So that's a great experience for them. And then these are some pictures. One of the things we like to do is enjoy a lunch together, whether we go to a fast food chain, or the students pack the lunch and we go to the park. It's a great bonding experience for them. This is the middle school and some of the events that we've done this year. The sixth graders were still included in the Mingo Creek trip, so they did go. In the Math 24 competition, the team won second place, and we had some students that won individual awards for scoring the highest amount of points. So they, they actually first and second place for seventh grade. Claysville does a steam night, and that's something that as a past Claysville teacher I used to help out with. So my students helped run two of the stations there, and we're planning on going back and doing that again next year. And that was a great leadership opportunity for them as well. We did squishy circuits and Alka-Seltzer rockets. And the students also were trying to explain the science behind it while they were doing the fun activities. There's also Connect Challenge with something big that the middle school students prepared for that was held at Penn West University. So they have to, they had to design their own prototype to solve a problem that's going on in the world, and they did infrastructure. So one of my groups had a floating bridge for when all these bridges are breaking and need to be repaired. So they had to research, find the problem, design the floating bridge. You're not allowed to come with it. It, it all has to be built there, and you have a set time limit, and then judges come around and they present their idea. And the other group did, I'm trying to think of the exact name for it, but it was a truck that could instantly fill the potholes. So they, they came up with great ideas, both groups for that. And they participated in Science Bowl in February. That's why that's not listed on here yet. That was held at the Museum of Natural History, and the students once again got to do a scavenger hunt through the museum. And I know that their feedback was they would like to go back another time and just get to pick what exhibits they're doing. So that's feedback that I'll take into future years, not just about the competition, but seeing what's there for themselves. We did do a student expo night that was held in May at the end of the year. Students who are in sixth grade on, actually fifth grade on, they pick an independent learning goal. For some of them, it could be an enrichment class that they're going to take. For other students, it would be doing a project. And there were a lot of various ideas that were there, and that's something I plan on doing again, and maybe inviting some of the younger grades to participate and do a show and tell. We also did participate in the IU One Showcase at Penn West University to represent McGuffey this year. And these are some pictures. That was at the Heinz History Center at the trolley, and that's Math 24 with the middle school team. These are more pictures of them through the exhibits. In addition, I've talked a lot about the competitions, but in the classroom, we're doing a lot of STEM building activities. That's the tallest spaghetti tower. So they are going through the engineer design process, learning the planning steps involved for all of these different things, no matter what it is, and then working sometimes as individuals, partners, or in small groups. So they get the experience of all of it. And then for high school, we have Academic League is something that's been a long established tradition, and we continue to participate in that. Next year in the fall, I will host an Academic League for the first time. So we're going to do one in November. The high school students had the opportunity to go to Allegany General Hospital for open heart surgery, and I know the previous gifted program teachers had also done that in the past. That's offered once every two years. So we will definitely be going back in the future. And it was, that was a great experience. The hospital actually takes the time to talk to them before they observe. They first talked to an ER nurse, and then they talked to the actual surgeon before they went in and saw the observation. You don't see anything with the patient. Everything's very confidential. You only see a small rectangle. And I learned in that experience that it's the only hospital on the East Coast that offers that kind of view from above. So it was really a great opportunity for them. I talked about Lit Fest already. We had some students that participated in that, and they had to read a total of four novels to be able to compete. They joined with another team since we just had two that did it this year. I am hoping to open that up to other interested students so we can take more than one team perhaps this year. We hosted NACLO here, which is a linguistics competition, and we'll continue to do that. Resume writing and college prep workshops was something that I offered during Highlander periods for students who wanted to partake in that. During the time that they're with me, we practice for Academic League. They work on their individual learning goals, and we have some other activities that we'll do in class together, such as logic puzzles, things of that nature. They did participate in the Range Resources Cage Drop Competition. That was a program that they had to work together as two teams, collaborate. They had to research how to protect a wellhead drill, and then design a cage prototype that fits certain dimensions. Once you get to the competition, your cages are tested out. If you survive the challenge drop, I'm sorry, the beginning drop, then you get to go to the challenge drop. You're not told until the day of what the max height or weight is going to be. So it's, it's a lot of strategic thinking and also some physics involved with trying to figure out what to do. But the research was also equally important. The students who did the best on their digital notebook, they got to go last. That way, they could see what other teams had tested out and what they thought would work. And our teams did really well overall. Our one team unfortunately did not pass the first drop to enter in, but their digital notebook had one of the highest scores. So I was very proud of them nevertheless. And our other team placed six out of seventeen teams. This is the view that we had for the open heart surgery. The lead surgeon wore a GoPro camera on his forehead, and we actually had the same screen above where we were in that room. And Mrs. Walters, who was previously the gifted teacher here, she, that's what she does, is the student programming. So it was nice for the students to have a little reunion as well, and she takes you through every step of the surgery. And as you can see in some of these pictures, they actually pass out replicas of what is going to be used. The students learn all about the difference. This was replacing a heart valve. So we learned about the pros and cons of what type of valve to use and what are the risks involved, as well as watching the surgery. Did anyone have any questions about anything so far? Okay. This is just showing a little bit. That is Literature Festival on the two pictures on the left. And one of our students, Kay, she was selected by the poet to read her poem out loud in front of that, the other students there. And then we have Claysville Steam Night helpers posing before all of the kids came. One of the things we did this year was enter into the Pittsburgh Gingerbread House Contest, and that's held down at the City Council Building. So the students worked together on a fun kind of enrichment activity. While we're down there, we toured the City Council Building, and students went ice skating. And for some of them, it was their very first time learning how to ice skate. It was a great bonding experience for them as well. These are some pictures in the classroom of some of the different things that I do with the students. They had to create a maze and get their bots to go through the maze by coding them, and that was something we had both Ozbot, Ozabots, Dr. Gottrin, I had borrowed a kit from him, used it at different levels. Students had a lot of fun with that activity. And this is just a little bit of what I was thinking at the time, looking into next year. I attended a training in January for Bots IQ where we had an opportunity to work with microbots and cobots, and I am new to that. However, one of the things that I learned is that they have kits. It doesn't cost anything. You can sign up and borrow it from the IU One, and you can take it to the school. You can also have them come to you and teach the kids how to use these. So that's something that I'm definitely going to do at different levels next year in the classroom. And I am working on developing a website for the gifted program. I know there was one before, so I'm going to go back to doing that again for next year. These are additional pictures of the kids. This was at the Museum of Natural History. Kids cracked me up some of the pictures, running away from the dinosaurs. This was a great experience. We did a girls' engineering exploration day, and there were all kind of hands-on activities there. You're not able to pick, you don't know what area of engineering you're going to go into. It's randomly assigned. However, they have a station in the middle that has a little taste of all the different kinds of engineering, and that's something I would definitely take them back and do again. They also have colleges that are there working with the students. So they had biomedical engineering, for instance. They had a 3D printer that was showing how to print a vein, or like a cartilage replacement for a knee. They had a robotic dog that the kids made chase me while they were there. But lots of different experiences happened. These are pictures of them. This was America Bowl where students are competing. And these are some additional programs. That's Calcio Crush down there, and some pictures mixed in of different challenges I have them do in the classroom when I work with them. So we do a mixture of advanced math. I do a lot of STEM activities, and we do stuff for Lit Fest, as well as just other engaging experiences. This is a picture of the floating bridge that the middle school students did at the Connects Activity. They, they did a great job, and that's both groups there. And this was the IU One Showcase. So students who wanted to participate in that, they all came up with their own project that they wanted to do. Some of them used their independent learning goal. Other kids used something that they did as a novel extension from our Lit Fest books, and others just came up with a completely new project that they wanted to do a show and tell for. But we had a great range. Several students wrote novels this year, short stories, and we are getting their books bound and everything. And then this was our Literature Festival where we had our students placed first and second place at the fourth and fifth grade Lit Fest. And they had to read five books for that competition. Some of them were really big. Mysterious Benedict Society is almost 400 pages. They read it in about a month. These are some examples of student projects working on that that presented at the Student Expo Night for gifted, and even the middle school students enjoy going to the playground. This was our cage drop competition for the high school students over at Range Resources. And this is Quiz Bowl where one of our teams did place first place. This was the Laurel Caverns experience, and yes, I was crawling with the kids through the cavern, all except for the second one, which involves some heights, and I'm afraid of heights. Did my best. But definitely, you know, it's been a great year, and I'm looking forward to more time to come with the students. And then the middle school students had their Literature Festival in May, and they also did really well at that competition. So they placed second place at the Lit Fest. Oh, and I have to tell you, we've done so many STEM projects this year. One of the stations was a build a boat, and they were just going to give some individual points per marble that you could fit in the boat. They never dreamed that the students would have more than thirty marbles. So my one team had, I think it was 136, and the other team 168. And so they had to redo all of the scoring because it wouldn't be fair to let them win off of one station. But they did a great job. This, this would be my K through three students at the competition. So they, they have a lot of engaging ways for the students to demonstrate their mastery over the novels. There was Pictionary, hidden clues. They, they did all of the different things along with trivia. They had to do sequencing of events. There were about twenty cards per book. They had to remember, like, what happened when. Okay, and that's actually my last slide there. Looking into next year, I know that I'm registering the high school for Hometown High Q, which would be something, I don't know if it's been done in the past or not here, but I'm going to bring that back. And for students interested in the Shakespeare monologue contest, that's going to be something that we do in February. There is a pumpkin drop that takes place down in Pittsburgh where they have to design a way to protect the pumpkin, and they actually drop it down from a height of a building. And there's a Schaler Steam Project. I know last year they had to design catapults, like big catapults, and launch things across. It's an outdoor project. So those are some activities, ideas that I'm going to pursue as we get into this next school year, as well as continuing to just look for ways to enrich them and keep them engaged. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen, thank you for jumping with both feet in.
Thank you.
And I wanted to say congratulations to all of the students that placed and everybody that participated and did so well. It was, that was really cool to watch. Thank you for coming and presenting.
Absolutely, and it's, it's been a pleasure with working with all of the students. And you, you would, you would just love to see the projects. I'm going to do a better job next year of getting more of the word out to the community for gifted expo night because I would love to show them off.
The last question I had was who's invited to expo night?
Anyone can come, yes. I just kind of circulated it around the emails of the school, but my plan is next year to get it even more out there in the community.
That would be awesome.
All right. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I have Mrs. Jackson with the policy committee update.
It's going to be real short and sweet. We have a policy that is up for second reading for vote tonight. So I have not heard from anybody. It's been out for a month, so there's that. The last meeting that we had, I think you'll see the agenda is there from the June 10th meeting. We were asked to bump a policy that was time sensitive for something that needed to be filed with the state. So we moved up policy 216, which is on copy of student records. That is there for a first read tonight. There, other than, and with all of these policies, a lot of it is just cleaning up grammar, mechanics, spelling, commas. I'm an English teacher at heart, so there's a lot of that. But other than that, the only big change is under guidelines, FFA needs to say specifically that student records are kept electronically for at least five years after graduation. That's really the only big change in the policy. And that wording came directly from the FFA guidelines, and that's why it's there. So tonight's the first reading. You'll have a month to look at it. Community has any questions or anything, they can contact your school, school board director. You can contact me, that's fine. The school board members, if you have anything, please get that to me. And then it'll be up for a second reading in July. And the second reading is when we typically vote. So after that, that actually didn't take that long to do, we continued with looking at policy 815, and that's where we are. That's a pretty big policy, that one. And the one to follow, 815.1, is a new policy that we're looking at. So those are probably a bit more time consuming.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you.
And finally, to give the budget presentation for the update on final numbers is Ms. Holmichak.
Thank you. School board members, in your packet you have the 2526 Final General Fund Budget Report that comes out of the Pennsylvania State System. That is similar to the report I gave you last week. However, there are a couple little tweaks, and we'll get to those. You also have my presentation, and it's very short today. I'll start with, again, the 2425 budget update. On the revenue side, we're, we're looking very positive. So it's good to see this. We've budgeted just under 35 million. As of May 31st, we have received 35.4 million in revenue. So we've actually met and exceeded our revenue goals. The three items you see there are the main contributors to that extra revenue are delinquent taxes. We actually have collected over 166,000 more than what we actually put into the budget. Our earnings on investment, a little bit higher, too, 112,000. Our rental income is where the big one is, and that's $247,000. And that's mostly because of a new Range Resource lease, and all of our royalties are going into that rental category. Expenditures, we had budgeted just under 36 million. As of May 31st, we had spent just over 31 million. So 86.4% of that budget, I'm feeling a little bit confident at this point that we may come out a little bit ahead instead of spending, but I, I hold my tongue a little bit because... out a little bit ahead instead of spending, but I hold my tongue a little bit because we still have to pay some bills through June, obviously, and we pay teachers through the summer and that is reflected in the 2425 budget. So I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but again, feeling positive.
And we don't really have the final numbers on that budget until fall.
Yes, 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 until fall. Usually about October it's kind of settled. The 2526 general fund budget, not a lot has changed since the proposed budget, but there were a couple items. On the expenditures, I had originally proposed $37,189,630. On this one, you will see that increase slightly, $37,288,564. There were two reasons for that. One is the electric usage, the electric. We are in a consortium with the IU One. They get the energy through U Source. So we had a meeting, U Source reached out to all of the districts that are in that consortium with estimated costs for the 2526 year. Ours actually, excuse me, ended up being about $65,000 higher than what I had originally anticipated. And I had anticipated an increase of about 15%, but it's still even going to be higher than that. And that is across the board. That is, energy costs are rising as we all know. The second contributor to that increase is our liability, cyber and workman's compensation insurance. They had been projecting a 20 to 22% increase, which is what I originally anticipated and put that number in the budget. It came in about $36,000 higher than that and a lot of that has to do with our workman's compensation insurance policy. Onto the revenue, this is slightly higher than last time as well. We had $35,519,279 in the original proposed. It went up slightly to $35,526,551. That is due to an increase in our assessed property values. So a couple times during the year, we get information from the Washington County Tax Claim Bureau on our assessed values. I received one in May and our property values increased from $940 million to $942 million. So a little bit more in revenue there. You will see however, that now the revenue is at 35.5, our expenses at 37.2. So our deficit increased slightly from last time from $1.6 million to $1.7. I just again, gave you information on the general fund reserve and what we're anticipating after this 2425 year. A total fund balance of $5.2 million with unassigned of $2.1. And then my last page on that presentation is what I'm projecting for June of 2026 or after our fiscal year, having an unassigned of only $431,000 with a total fund balance of $3 million. And of course, it's all fluid.
But your recommendation is still?
Yeah. So we can, we need to hopefully finalize this tonight and approve this final budget. I have to have it open to the public for 20 days and then we can put it into the state system. I have to have that done by July 15th. Mr. Laser? We still do have some subsidies coming in for the month of June. We'll have some reconciliation subsidies for transportation, any basic subsidies are still to come. So there'll be some. It's not going to be huge amounts like we see like every other month up and, but getting into June and July, we're about to the end.
I'm sorry, so again, I just, just to clarify, you're still recommending that we go to the index?
Well, we already voted on that last week.
Well, we voted on the proposed or the...
We voted on the tax increase plus the approval of the proposed budget.
Right. So the proposed budget, correct?
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
With the tax increase, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Oberg. It is now 6:38 PM. That'll conclude the committee meeting. We will reconvene at the regular school board meeting. Since we're a little early, we'll do it at 6:50 PM.
It is now six fifty-one. I'd like to call to order the McGuffey School Board, regular school board meeting. Roll call please, Ms. Seibert.
Ms. Seibert, here.
Mr. Seibert.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Ms. Karen.
Present.
Ms. Laeger.
Here.
Ms. Garmine.
Here.
Ms. Shingle.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Gadda.
Here.
Want to make a couple announcements before we do the prayer. I want to take a moment and send our thoughts and prayers to our neighbors in West Virginia and surrounding areas that have been affected by the recent floods. We also have several McGuffey employees that are dealing with property damage and the possibility of a total property loss due to the flooding. So please take your thought, uh, send your thoughts and prayers to them, and there will be some donations and some drives that will be announced here shortly by our staff. Also want to take a moment and sadly pass along, the McGuffey family mourns the loss of former athletic director Larry Rollins, who recently passed away. Larry became the athletic director after the sudden passing of his predecessor, Richard Cole. During Larry's tenure as the athletic director at McGuffey, the McGuffey athletic department thrived. Under Larry's tutelage, the W, uh, the football team went to back-to-back WPL championships in ninety-three and ninety-four, winning the title in ninety-four. Larry was also the athletic director when McGuffey had their first four-time state wrestling champion in Jeremy Hunter. Larry was instrumental in the new gymnasium and the athletic facilities we currently have. Larry also served for years on the WPL wrestling committee. He truly loved McGuffey. Services will be private, but memorial contributions can be made to the Nathan Kennedy Memorial Scholarship. So our thoughts and prayers to the Rollins family. Like to introduce Evan Wright. He is from the Dutch Fork Christian Church. Evan's also a Grove City college graduate and also a McGuffey alum. Yep, front and center.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, if I may also, anything you can give will help with the flooding in Valley Grove. You mentioned the employees who actually had the pleasure or pleasure sad, however you want to look at it, of working with and helping a maintenance person from the elementary school. It's truly tragic what happened out there. If there's anything you can give will truly be a blessing. So shall we pray? Dear my Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for everything you've given to us. Thank you for your son. Thank you for the gift of him dying on the cross for us on our sins. We ask you to please be at the meeting here tonight. Help everything that is said to be good and pleasing, said and done to be good and pleasing in your sight. Let your will be done tonight. I would ask you to put a special, uh, your arms around the entire whole Valley community. Everyone who's lost loved ones, lost items, lost their houses, whatever it is. Everyone down there has lost something. And I would ask you just please be there while working, whether it be donations, giving, handling those, delivering them, whatever it is, on the front lines, searching for people, moving, pulling cars out of the creek, cleaning houses, shoveling mud, whatever it is, just please be with everybody and, uh, put your, give them your strength and please give everyone down there your comfort and your peace. I would ask you to just please continue to let the support from the community be strong in that, and thank you for everything, and thank you for places like this where you can still get up and pray before a school board meeting starts. And your son's name I pray, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Would everybody please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We held two executive sessions. One was held on Tuesday, July tenth, and one was held today at five P.M. to discuss personnel. At this time, we will take public comment on agenda items. Thank you.
Dicky Jordan, Buffalo Township. I have a lot on this list tonight, but I think I'm gonna forego some of it tonight just because. Of course, I'm gonna start with coaches. We have a list of coaches being on the agenda for rehire. And again, parent, no input from parents, no input from student athletes. And as I've told you all every time you put it on the agenda, I'm gonna stand before you and ask you to include the parents and the students, their input to who is coaching them. With that being such an important part of their lives, their voices should be heard. And you continue to neglect them and not hear what they have to say. Doesn't necessarily have to be bad. Maybe it's all gonna be good, you hear. I think you're all smart enough to wade through what's been dictated and what's not. The special education teachers, are they part of the budget, the two new hires? Okay. I'm also confused why we're not naming teachers who are residing from the district. We've never done this before. The names have always been on there. We have to hear it through teachers, cafeteria workers, paraeducators. Everybody knows, why doesn't the community know? I feel we have a right to know that information. I think it's important for us to know. Maybe we want to thank them. Maybe we want to cheer their going, but we have the right to do that. I'm gonna skip that one 'cause I don't want to be mean tonight. Nah, I don't want to do it. Uh, the only other thing I'm gonna say tonight is about our solicitor who isn't here again. I hope you have all decided it's time to move forward with a new solicitor and give this board a chance of uniting together. I don't think it's ever gonna happen under our current solicitor. I think we're overdue for this. And I hope, I hope tonight you guys can put aside your differences and really look out for what's the best interest of the district and move forward with a new set of eyes and ears. Again, I'm gonna limit what I say because it's not a pleasant thought in regard to this particular solicitor. So I'm just gonna ask you guys, please, it's time for us to move on. And with that, I'll see you at non-agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. President, the next speaker would be Betty Shingle, Donovan Township.
Thank you.
I'm gonna be speaking about D1 also. I want to begin with this. I, Betty A. Shingle, do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth, and that I will discharge all the duties of my office with complete fidelity. I have recently been reviewing that and thinking that, I'm not so sure. We shouldn't say that every single time we take these seats. Just remember why we're here. When I took that oath, it was for the students, for the taxpaying residents, and we somewhere along the way have become so disoriented. I'm sure that you all know, I've, for the last year and a half, I have asked myself, what can I do personally? I'm the oldest one on the board, don't you? Gosh, I may be the oldest one in the room. What a thing to have to admit to, but then that's a fact. Well, the thing is, I, I have had some life experience. It's not the first time I've been in a difficult situation. But about a year and a half ago, our board really was fractured. And it was found that there truly was some bullying going on. You've all talked about it. You've all seen it. It's been demonstrated. The very last board meeting, you had our superintendent being bullied. I mean, and the solicitor being run off and whatever. The thing is, those are not why we're here. We're here for the students of McGuffey District, which is a great district. We are so blessed by so many good things. We need to get ourselves back in focus of the students and the taxpaying residents. And that means showing trust and respect for our administrative team, for our superintendent, for the solicitor, for all of the board members. And that's just not happening. I've been in the medical field long enough to tell you, when a wound occurs, just leaving it go and ignoring it, it never heals. So this is the problem. Because we had this infraction, and it was huge. It was never resolved. So it just kept building factions. So then you had these people and these people, which you all have seen now. And that's nothing but the good, bad, and the ugly. Really, really stinking ugly. And it's going to continue until we do something different. That's us. I'm talking about us collectively here. So here's the thing. This is where we get to the solicitor situation. The whole process of the way that was approached was wrong and not according to our procedure. So that's a little bit of an issue. But one person to choose from does not a choice make. So even though you may think that that's a great thing, and some of you have said, it's time for a change. Okay, there's still a proper way to do it. Having one person to choose from is not the proper way. Having the way it was addressed to us as other board members was not the proper way. And that puts a downcast on every decision that we make after that. And here's the thing, and guys, I mean this with the utmost love and respect and compassion. I know every one of you took that oath the same as me, and you all feel the same way in your heart. And we've all been hurt at different times, really hurt, to the point that you want to leave the building screaming and never return. And that is a sad state of affairs. The thing is, we've got to get off of this selfishness. I want to talk longer. I want to speak more. I want to overtalk everybody else. That's just plain disrespectful. And a new solicitor, however you feel about it, is not going to heal this board's problems. That's just something to be thinking about. Thank you.
Officer.
Ms. President, last person on the list is Ronnie Jackson from Blue Township.
Thank you.
I am a steadfast supporter of our constitutional rights, and I have advocated as such as a school board director for McGuffey School District. I have consistently promoted untimed public comments and spoken against the efforts to monitor how and what is said by community members, often at the ire of fellow board members and at times the district solicitor. It is not always easy to listen to these comments, such as when they are filled with profanity, which is not a part of my everyday language. Provide information that is inaccurate or just plain untruthful or mean and rude. Yet I would fight with my dying breath to protect any citizen's right to free speech and would be the first to speak up, even in opposition to leadership, against an attempt to limit someone's freedom. To be clear, that is not what happened at last month's meeting. The community member who was removed from the meeting had her full time to speak, with the only interruption being when she engaged a member of the board by addressing him by name. It was after she left his podium and continued to disrupt the meeting by shouting out and cursing that she was removed. Definitely not a moment of which any of us should be proud, but also not a denial of anyone's right to free speech. One of the primary duties of the board president is to maintain the order of full board meetings. A lack of order in any assembly will result in chaos, and the proof of order is the absence of benedlam. Perhaps no one has said it better than Martin Luther King, "Peace is not merely the absence of war, but the presence of justice, of law, of order." Dr. King and our founding fathers knew that our freedoms must be tempered by our morals. Indeed, the second president of the United States, John Adams, said, "Statesmen may plan, um, excuse me, may plan and speculate for liberty, but it is religion and morality alone which can establish the principles upon which freedom can securely stand." In other words, no matter how well a constitution is constructed, it will not ensure freedom and prosperity unless it is supported by a moral, virtuous people. The situation at last month's meeting has brought into focus the problem at our school board meetings, which is not suppression of free speech, but rather a lack of personal constraint in the expression of our freedom. More simply, we, myself included, give ourselves too much permission to say mean and rude things with the intent to hurt or humiliate another, all under the guise of free speech and transparency. For as much time as we in this room, on both sides of the table, spend talking about bullying, it is astounding to me that we do not bat an eye at meanness and rudeness. What is bullying but meanness and rudeness left unchecked? Yet not only do we overlook mean and rude behavior and speech, we also rationalize it. For example, a statement that begins with, "With all due respect," will almost assuredly follow with something that is not respectful, something that is mean or rude, as if a qualifier excuses the malicious and often hostile speech. The question is, how do we balance free speech and kindness? As with all things, the answer is found in God's Word. I will preface this by saying that the Bible must be taken and followed as a whole.
Ms. Seibert, just stop here real quick, and I'm sorry. What agenda item?
See, public comment.
Agenda item. Agenda item.
It is an agenda item.
What agenda item are you addressing?
It is, public comment is on the agenda. I'm addressing public comments on the agenda.
Okay, okay, all right. Continue, I apologize.
Did you restart my time? The question is, how do we balance free speech and kindness? As with all things, the answer is found in God's Word. I will preface this by saying that the Bible must be taken and followed as a whole. Contrary to how many people use it, even in this forum, by cherry picking a verse and plucking it out of context to make a single point, pure and practical application of the Bible is following all of its teachings, not just the parts we like. There is a difference between what I'm allowed to do and what I should do. 1 Corinthians ten twenty-three states, "All things are allowed," you say, "but not all things are good." All things are allowed, but some things don't help anyone. In other words, just because I have the freedom, I'm allowed, to say anything I want, doesn't mean I should. Rather, I should consider whether I want to, what I want to say is good or helpful to anyone. Indeed, the Bible teaches that words can bring about life or death, Proverbs eight twenty-one. An unruly tongue is dangerous, even evil, James three eight through ten. It is important to keep one's tongue from evil and deceitful speech, 1 Peter three ten through twelve. Guarding one's mouth and tongue can keep one out of trouble, Proverbs twenty-one twenty-three. And gentle anger turns away wrath, while a harsh word stirs up anger, Proverbs fifteen one. Ephesians four twenty-nine sums it all up. When you talk, don't say anything bad, but say the good things that people need, whatever will help them grow stronger. Then what you say will be a blessing to those who hear you. Some listeners are no doubt shaking their heads and wondering how we are going to address issues and concerns in such a manner. Certainly, we can't be good and positive all the time, can we? God doesn't say we can't discuss hard, even unpleasant topics. It's not about the topics themselves, but rather the intention behind and the manner in which we broach such topics. The Bible consistently highlights the importance of tone and kindness in communication. We will never be successful in addressing concerns and moving forward if we choose to use our free speech to get in our digs at each other with mean, rude, and disrespectful words. We need to remember that we can agree to disagree. It is unrealistic to expect that we will all agree on all subjects at all times, and having a different opinion does not make someone evil. The term needs to be reserved for the real threat in our lives, Ephesians six twelve. Our fight is not against people on earth. We are fighting against the spiritual powers of evil in the heavenly places. Everyone has been created by God and deserves to be treated kindly as part of God's creation. The Pharisees once asked Jesus, "What is the greatest commandment?" Jesus answered, "Love the Lord your God with all your heart, all your soul, and all your mind." This is the first and most important command. And the second command is like the first. Love your neighbor the same as you love yourself, Matthew twenty-two thirty-seven through thirty-nine. Jesus was clear that we should treat others with love and respect. Indeed, he went on to say in verse forty, "All of the law and the writings of the prophets take their meaning from these two commands." In other words, these two commandments, to love God with everything we have and to love others as we love ourselves, are at the core of all Christian tenets. If we can't do these two things, we can't truly say we are Christians. We must do better for our community on both sides of the table in the way we act towards and speak to each other, myself included. In the words of Spiderman's Uncle Ben, "With great power comes great responsibility." Let's use our power of free speech responsibly so that we may all work together to accomplish great things in our school, in our district, and in our community. I would like to take this time to personally apologize to anybody to whom I have spoken unkindly. With not my intent, I do get caught up in the moment sometimes when you are constantly being berated and have unkind things headed your way. It is sometimes challenging to not respond in kind. But I should, and I will work on that moving forward, and I apologize. But the message is for all of us. It's not just free speech. It's not just moving forward. It's how to do those things together.
Time's up, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you.
Officer Seibert? No more. All right.
Um, I'm not sure we go to executive session.
I need a second.
Second.
Huh? Uh, yes, personnel. Thank you, Mr. Vanada. Um, motions on the floor, second. I need a vote, all in favor, to go executive session to discuss personnel. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, staying, motion carries. We are in reset. We are in re-
It is now 8:27. We will reconvene. We held executive session to discuss personnel, contracts, and possible litigation. Moving on. Need a motion to appoint Rebecca Hall of Weiss, Burkhart, Kramer to serve as solicitor for the McGuffey School District under the terms and conditions of the board.
Second.
Discussion.
I will say that concerns about Ms. Hall and Weiss, Burkhart, and Kramer aside, my biggest concern is, and has been, the manner in which this has been brought about. It is quite frankly appalling to me that more people aren't concerned with the fact that we had one board member who acted outside of the knowledge and consent of the rest of the board and contacted an attorney of his choice and asked her if she was eligible for the position and then motioned for that in a public meeting without notifying the rest of the board. I don't know how we get beyond that. By that same token, each member of the board should be provided an opportunity to call a solicitor of his or her own choice and ask them to consider employment with us and to sit for an interview. Barring that, I make a motion to table this motion of hiring Rebecca Hall of Weiss, Burkhart, and Kramer pending posting for RFEPs and holding interviews for a solicitor so that we have more than one choice.
I second the table.
We have a motion on the floor to table the appointment of a solicitor and we have a second, Ms. Hybert, roll call that vote. You're voting yes to table? You're voting no to not table it?
Ms. Frye?
No.
Ms. Groh?
No.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Laitier?
No.
Ms. Varnik?
No.
Ms. Chingle?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm voting yes to table this policy or yes, this process originated from my own vision of our school board policy.
Mr. Banada?
No.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Ms. Plauch?
So it fails?
Fails.
It fails. All right. So we will go back to the appointment of solicitor. We had a first, we had a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that I also was not aware of Ms. Hall being contacted prior to the motion, but I also would say that it was brought to the board and the board made the decision as a whole, and here we are today. And that was when the decision from the board as a whole was made. That's where we're at with it.
The decision was by a majority of the board, not the whole board. I think that needs clarification for the majority of the board. That's how we do things.
Correct. I apologize.
But I don't know how we move forward towards unity when we continue to make decisions that way.
We haven't had it so far. It's worth a shot.
Any further discussion? Ms. Hybert, I ask a roll call vote be taken, please.
Ms. Groh?
You are voting yes to appoint, no to not appoint.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Laitier?
Yes.
Ms. Varnik?
Yes.
Ms. Chingle?
No.
Ms. Thomas?
I'm voting no to appoint this process originated from a violation of our school board policy.
Ms. Banada?
Yes.
Ms. Frye?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
My vote really doesn't matter one way or the other right now, but I am going to say, I'm going to echo Mr. Thomas. I'm only voting no because of the violation of the school board policy, how it came about.
Glad for the answer.
Ms. Hall, congratulations. Welcome to McGuffey as our solicitor. Let's just take a couple minutes while she gets situated.
Before we go any further, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Indris and Price for their many years of service to McGuffey School Board, um, even in face of some horrific treatment from this community, um, realizing not everything that was ever done was always okay with everyone, but they did serve this district and they served it as well for a long period of time. Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five school board meeting.
Second.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Unabstained. Need a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from May twelfth, twenty twenty-five to June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Check numbers eight zero eight seven four to check number eight one zero zero eight in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and thirty-one cents as submitted.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the food service schedule of bills dated June nine, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, check number seven seven nine six to check number seven seven nine nine in the amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents as submitted.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of May twenty twenty-five as submitted. No move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve as presented the memorandum of understanding from Miss Hybert for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
Second. Second.
Discussion.
Yes. Can it, can, if he explains as to what this is, why, why we're receiving an MOU? I mean, I read it, but I don't understand exactly what it is that there is.
So three, three basic points. Uh, one is going to be the evaluation of staff that would, uh, do on the cyber program. Two is laying down the difference between cyber and if, if we have any calls as online as we may deck. And then three would be the compensation per, that we have three staff, student, high school, one, most, we actually have five, and three that apparently would happen next year. Their compensation is thousands of dollars per semester. Those are the, the main points of what he's read as far as the attachment. The reason why it is an MOU every year is because, uh, it was not in the current NDA contract. So the next time that comes around, we'll be sure that those are there, so that we address that here and then. But this hasn't changed, uh, since last thing, and we were asking you to redo it.
Okay.
Further discussion?
And it's also budget for our.
Yeah, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the attached list of books be removed from the high school, middle school library and authorized disposal of the books as per the terms and conditions of District Policy seven zero six point one, disposal of obsolete outdated equipment. So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Just a reminder to the community that it's. It's a thing that.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Jackson.
Reminder to the community, if there's anyone interested in those, to contact the superintendent.
Ms. Fry?
Kind of leads me into my question, is I know we ask about this all the time, what happens with the books, and I know you've mentioned before that some of them stay in the school in the upstairs library, but is that correct?
So for these, if this is correct, this is the middle school library that's being housed, uh, second floor, um, and it works, and by the way, I want to actually stick you, I'd make, um, uh, Maura McEnown, she's our middle school ELA teacher, she's also, also the ELA chair. Um, she would go down on her preface and go through the stacks of books.
Right.
I mean, I mean, I mean, I actually totally thank her for that work.
Yeah. A lot of work, yeah. So with that, they are remaining in the building, they're just not remaining in.
Circulation.
The high school, well, so removing from circulation.
These.
I guess I'm confused on how they're being used.
Or, uh, they, these are discarded library books that have been checked out, uh, there may be redundancies.
Right.
Um, what, so what she's doing is people discarding those books that are not used, old, whatever they be, and then she's keeping those books that are actually being housed right down to the second floor. So our middle school component of, of McGuffey is housed on the second floor, so.
But these books will be removed from the library, discarded?
Absolutely.
Unless somebody calls and wants copies.
I think that's where I'm confused. I'm under the impression that whenever we're asking for these to be removed from the high school, middle school, that they were going to another room in the, in the building and being used there. That was the impression that I got one of the last times that I had asked you, and I think I'm still confused on that. These will no longer be in the building once. Okay.
I don't know if it would help you any, but at other schools that I've worked with, we've got some of those books, because we needed them and they need it, yeah.
If that helps for you. No, I'm aware of that. I just, I guess I was thinking maybe there was a program that a teacher was using some of these books, or they were no longer needed in the library, but they wanted to have something available to students in another room. I guess I was just confused on how that works. The student wouldn't have to actually check them out, they could just go up to the room and take whatever they wanted or needed. I guess that's where I was confused. So I appreciate the clarification, because now I understand a hundred percent. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to declare the attached list of textbooks along with any supplemental or related resources associated with the attached list as unused and unnecessary and authorized disposal of the items as per the terms and conditions of McGuffey School District Policy seven oh six point one, disposal of obsolete outdated equipment. No move.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, um, with, it's on the last page, there's Webster's Intermediate Dictionary, Webster's School Dictionary, Webster's Book Thorax. What is it that's unnecessary or obsolete about those particular books?
If I, I could speak to dictionaries and Thorax and Thorax.
These books in order are used by the districts. They haven't been, have been used by students or students. They're going to be looking at oftentimes, something that they would be using Thorax for, and they'd actually probably go to Google it first and foremost. We have, we have different titles that are there for you to look at in that Thorax nineteen ninety-nine. Most, majority of the titles that are being discarded, again, not being used by anyone in our school, are from the nineties, early two thousand.
And dictionaries and Thorax, any reference book like that, they do get updated, so they're out of date, which is why nobody uses them.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the application for homebound instruction for student D, grade nine, for medical reasons.
No move.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Washington School District student W one to attend McGuffey High School for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year to participate in the Engineering Technologies CTE Program of Study.
No move.
Second.
Discussion.
Are they just coming for the CTE program, or they will be attending McGuffey as a whole to get that?
Okay. What makes them eligible to attend is that we offer that program and their district has it.
Right, right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Washington School District student W one. Should be W two, that I thought. Approve, why, let me start over, then switch that. Approve Washington School District student W two to attend McGuffey High School for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year to participate in the Engineering Technologies CTE Program of Study.
I motion to amend the motion to reflect the correct number. Oh.
Mine says W two.
Mine didn't. It just switched over, like the screen switched on.
Oh, it just switched.
The printed copy says W two.
The computer was a little bit slow then. Sorry.
Mine says on the paper copy, approve Washington School District student W two to attend McGuffey High School for the twenty twenty-five school year to participate in the General Agricultural CTE Program of Study.
Yeah. Oh, I don't know. I follow the paper copy instructions.
Where's this been coming from?
That's, that's, just because what she's looking at, it's running off on the page before.
Mm-hmm. All right, all right. So we're all straight.
Sorry, sorry to cause the confusion.
It's okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I believe so, because we were discussing it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah.
Well, we just really just out there on this one. Did we all vote?
I have no idea. Did we vote?
Just to be sure, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion finally carries for W two. It's these small screens. Need a motion to accept the grant of one thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars from the Alice Boone Maine Memorial Fund per McGuffey School District Policy Number seven oh two, gifts, grants, and donations.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, forgot to say aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Now, if we lump all these in. Yeah. All right, so.
I make a motion that we accept the donation for items eight through fourteen, right? Through fourteen as written and reflected in the agenda.
I'm second.
All right, so we will vote on eight through fourteen. Your motion was to actually combine them.
Correct.
So, well, to combine them, and then we have to vote to accept them.
Okay, okay. I, I'll make a motion to combine items eight through fourteen as, as donations as they are written on the agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Uh, wait, somebody seconded that? Okay.
Um, opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Now I make a motion to accept.
Well, I have to make that motion.
No.
Because you already adjourned, you already.
amended it.
Yeah, you already amended it. So now I'll make a motion for all the donations be accepted.
Okay.
There you go. Any discussion? And that is per the terms of the McGuffey School District Policy seven oh two, gifts, grants, and donations.
Okay, so you're making a motion, so I second it.
Chad.
Okay, okay. Do we need to vote on that then?
Huh?
We need to vote to accept them, correct?
Yeah, I'm getting ready.
Oh, okay.
It's okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Mr. President, is there any way we could just quickly say absolutely, I'll run them down.
Whatever in the amounts.
Yep, all right, run them down. Uh, one is from, and thank you, Mr. Lager, that's a good idea, uh, donation from the Chapman Corporation for five hundred dollars for the middle school Kennywood field trip. One is from Bud Bear Auto Washington for two hundred dollars for the middle school Kennywood field trip. The third is a donation from Donors Choose of one hundred dollars for, of gift cards to classroom supplies for Mrs. Porter's classroom and another project with a hundred ninety-one dollar value for Mrs. Allison's classrooms. I'm waiting for it to come through, come on. Uh, another one is from Donors Choose. All right, I'll get back to.
Did you get the Olivia Scott?
I tried, it wasn't open, so I'll get to, let me do number twelve real quick. Donors Choose for adaptive paper inflexible seating, um, a value of six hundred and forty-three dollars for Mrs. Osko's classroom. Accept the donation for Olivia Scott Foundation for two futons for Mrs. Allison's classroom.
Flexible seating, probably.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Um, we'll get back to that, Mr. Thomas. Accept the donation for, um, CNX for seventy-five hundred to eliminate student cafeteria debt. And a donation from United Presbyterian Church for nine hundred and thirty-five dollars for graduating seniors outstanding debt.
The graduating seniors had outstanding debt?
Not anymore.
Oh, for individual students outstanding debt. I thought you meant the class as a whole. Uh, you mean like graduating students who had like.
Bills?
A bill at the cafeteria or something like, okay.
All right.
Do you want to answer? I would imagine, I'd imagine the case of Mrs. Allison's class, that was for comfortable seating arrangements for her third graders.
Like a reading.
Flexible seating.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you to everybody that donated. Need a motion to approve as presented the new textbooks and related resources for K through five science and six through twelve social studies.
So move.
Discussion.
Again, I would just like to thank Dr. Botron and his team for all that they did in that process, especially, um, in making, in being so transparent with the process itself and making materials available for members of the community to view over the last month. They have consistently gone above and beyond the board's expectations for transparency in the process, and I thank them for that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number two six one six effective June second, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
No move.
Second. Discussion.
Not, I, I mean, in relation to resignations in general, so I'm going to use the opportunity for this resignation. I also do not like and don't agree with identifying them by employee number. We've always done by name. I don't understand why it can't still be by name. Um, and so I, I think that needs to be addressed and discussed as a board.
I recall it was a recommendation from the solicitor as to what she spoke to two months ago, maybe it was, or two meetings ago. Um, she was the one who had recommended it. I also disagree with it, though. I would like to see their names on there for the public knowledge.
Is it something we could change moving forward?
So generally, I see the districts that I work with taking different approaches on that. Um, and, you know, typically the districts would use a personnel number. Uh, we could, I, I would assume there would be some reasons for resignation, maybe.
I, I would assume there would be some reasons for resignation, maybe an employee wouldn't want shared, or, you know, so maybe we could start asking employees if it would be okay to share the name on the agenda, but typically it would be an employee number just for confidentiality.
That's just for us. It's okay, it's okay.
I, I understand what he's saying, though, because this paper is up on that table and everyone coming in here that got this has this where it says admin content and it has the name.
Is that what your agenda said, Doc?
Yeah, because this.
These were here when we got here, but I didn't know they were printed specifically for us. Yeah, I was just curious. I thought that was just our view as well.
It's just our view on board docs. On, I'm saying on board docs. On board docs, only board members have access to the administrative content, but the printed copy has all of it. So.
Something definitely we can revisit.
Yeah, I think we did.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number two four zero zero effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to hire Joseph Dunin as a high school mathematics teacher at Masters Plus Thirty Step One, subject to assignment, current assignment McGuffey High School as per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
So move, second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
I'm here to present, Joseph is high school assistant principal Brady Stoy, ready?
Thank you. Good evening, McGuffey Community, I'm Mr. Stoy Assistant Principal of the High School. It is my honor to introduce Mr. Joseph Dunin, our candidate selected as the newest member of the high school math department. Mr. Dunin studied at WJ, graduated in two thousand and ten with a bachelor's degree in math and a minor in Spanish. Upon graduation, Mr. Dunin further pursued his education obtaining a master's in statistics at West Virginia University. During his time at WVU, he worked as a teaching assistant and also tutoring students who were not math focused but need help, needed help on their required math courses. Mr. Dunin then worked as a data analyst in Columbus, Ohio, to return to the Pittsburgh area after a decade in this role to pursue his true passion, teaching math. Mr. Dunin obtained a second master's degree of arts of teaching mathematics at the University of Pittsburgh and completed his student teaching experience at Carrick High School. He went to both Pitt and WVU. Mr. Dunin brings a unique mixture of, excuse me, of corporate statistics work, experience, a lifelong love of mathematics, and a passion for educating future generations about the significance of learning mathematics and applying it to enrich everyday life. I am pleased to present Mr. Joseph Dunin.
I'm going to make it short and sweet, um, I'm just very excited to be, to be here, very excited to get going, and just from interviewing with Mr. Stoy and Mr. Bonus, I feel like I'm going to fit in great here, and it's been a great environment, so thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Need a motion to hire Carly DeGritola as a middle school special education teacher at Bachelor's Step One, subject to assignment, current assignment McGuffey Middle School, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, um, just for clarification, this is not a new position, this is, um, a position that we've had that we're just selling.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Here to present, uh, Carly is our supervisor of special education, Ms. Kellyanne Marte.
Thank you. While we are very excited to welcome an exceptional special education teacher to our McGuffey School District family, uh, this energetic educator brings a specialized background in early childhood and special education from Slippery Rock University, combined with diverse experience working with children across multiple settings. She's known for her high energy and genuine passion for building meaningful relationships with both students and families. Carly is committed to creating supportive learning environments where every child can and will succeed.
I'll keep mine short and sweet as well, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity, it absolutely means the world to me, and I was talking to Joseph, it's in my interviews, I felt truly at home here, and I am so excited to finally start my journey in this welcoming culture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to hire Samantha Bonus as an elementary special education teacher at Bachelor's Step One, subject to assignment, current assignment Claysville Elementary School, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement and pending receipt of all required, uh, required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verification.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
My question is the same, just for clarification, is this position something that we've had and we're just selling?
Correct.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Kellyanne?
So Sam, you may, look, she may be a familiar face to us, uh, she brings a unique combination of fresh, fresh certification credentials and extensive hands-on experience within our own district. As McGuffey alumni, she has deep rooted connection to our community and has progressed from emergency substitute to building substitute to long-term special education teacher, demonstrating unwavering commitment to our students and profound understanding of our district's culture and expectations. She also holds a bachelor's of science degree from Slippery Rock in physical activity and fitness management, and with the recent completion of her pre-K to twelve special ed certification from Point Park University, she is exceptionally well prepared to make an immediate positive impact in her new permanent role here at McGuffey.
I'm going to make it short and sweet, I thank you all for this opportunity, and I am happy to be home, like, permanently.
Welcome, welcome. Need a motion to approve Isaac Ness as a long-term substitute teacher for the first semester of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year per the terms and conditions of the current agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and McGuffey Education Association and pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Elizabeth Kraus as a long-term substitute teacher for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, per the terms and conditions of the current agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and McGuffey Education Association and pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verification.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
She's another McGuffey person. Just saying.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Frances Williams, Lucy Sapp, Stacy Booth, Charity Crashar, and Sheila Moore as drivers for G G and C for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Kelsey Fahy, Paul McLean, and Michael Zalinski as drivers for first student for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented for the payroll and benefits specialist effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty thirty.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the renewal of the Administrative Assistance Employment Agreement as presented effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty thirty.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion for approval to post and advertise for an accounting specialist.
So move. Second.
Did I get a second? Sorry, I'm sorry. Um, discussion?
Is this in the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to rehire Justin Cruthers as the head track coach for the twenty-twenty-six spring sports season.
I would again just ask that we continue to read the whole recommended action for the sake of those here listening.
As per the MEA agreement, in the event of a partial season salaries will be prorated.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to, um, thank Mr. Cruthers, he does an outstanding job with track.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to rehire Ms. Caitlin Group for the twenty-twenty-six head boys tennis coach spring sports season as per the MEA agreement.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Again, thank her for all that she does, she does well without.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to rehire Ms. Carly Pettit as head softball coach for the twenty-twenty-six spring sports season as per the MEA agreement, in the event of a partial season salaries will be prorated.
So move. Second.
Discussion? Uh, I will say, um, Ms. Pettit and the softball team had their playoff victory this year against, um, Ligonier Valley, I believe, and it's the first playoff victory in over eleven years, I believe, for the softball team.
I've been hearing nothing great things from people.
So congratulations to the team and to her. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to rehire Mr. Brent Graham as head baseball coach for the twenty-twenty-six spring sports season as per the MEA agreement, in the event of a partial season salaries will be prorated.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
One year in, he's going to do the next one.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve policy eight twenty-seven for adoption.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Policy two sixteen is there for the first reading.
Just a reminder once again, if any board members, um, have anything they'd like to, uh, questions that they have or anything they'd like to submit regarding that, please, um, contact me and any public members, members of the community as well before the next vote, next month.
Need a motion to approve the agreement between McGuffey School District and Transitional Employment Consultant Incorporated for Special Education Services for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So move.
Discussion?
Yes, um, I've read through this, I guess I'm just unsure. It's not transition learning, it's a different company altogether.
Correct, this is T E C, they provide, again, if I'm going to break it down pretty simply, they provide transitional services, vocational services, so the student has an IP that would identify them as needing that, uh, they provide, if we need, transitional services, transitation, and then also ESY, that's for the school year. So what we're, what we're, what we're entering into agreement, and we've done this every year, is if there's potential for a need in those basic careers.
Have we used them?
Yes.
A lot, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the Pennsylvania School Board Association membership renewal in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents, which is an increase of fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, um, you all know where I stand with PSDA, I have concerns about outsourcing authority, um, but with that being said, how often has PSDA been used, with the exception of the, you know, monthly reports, um, how often have we relied on them in the last year since we approved this last year?
I think one of the biggest things we had was the, uh, board retreat that was held at IU one, uh, a number of, of, of the members here attended that, and that was a great, uh, full day of training. Um, again, we look at that when it comes to our policy, of course, uh, we have not had a policy that necessarily has looked at, but if you provide on a quarterly basis, they provide updates to policies that we would bring to our attention in the policy, uh, committee. Thank God, we've not had emergencies where I've had to use their emergency services to craft communication, but when that did happen over a year ago, that was something I definitely relied on, so.
Okay, and with the intermediate unit retreat, PSDA sponsored by?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
There was still a cost to go, to attend?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I, could I ask a question I wanted to ask the solicitor, or have you used that? Our last solicitor, we asked this question last year, and she explained how she used it, do you use it and how do you use it?
If, if you have PSDA, then I would access it if you would like me to work on policies. I know I'm new, so we haven't kind of discussed yet my role in certain aspects of the district, but, um, I do like to use PSBA for the policy update, uh, they stay very on top of those trends, um, and, you know, the board trainings are, are generally, um, very good as well, so, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the purchase of Frontline's financial planning analytics and budget management analytics software. There is a one-time implement, implementation fee of one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two dollars, the recurring annual fee is thirteen thousand two hundred dollars, this software package is offered at a five thousand eight hundred dollar discount since Frontline is our absence management system.
So move. Second.
Discussion?
So, the thirteen thousand two hundred annual fee is reduced by five thousand eight hundred? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
For how long?
This, while we're doing a one-year contract with them.
So for one year?
Yes. Uh, this is a product, I gave you examples on the website, we had talked about future planning, future financial planning, this is a tool that's going to help us do that in a much quicker and have more accurate data.
And then we'll reevaluate at the end of the year.
And then we'll reevaluate.
Correct.
Thank you.
And this is in the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve payment to Andrews and Price for invoice dated April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars as submitted.
So move. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. I need a motion to approve payment to Andrews and Price for invoice dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars as submitted.
So move. Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, I see it, yeah. Should it be May? All right. So we're gonna make that May thirty first.
So do we need to motion to amend it?
Motion to amend?
The subject is accurate, the details are not inside.
The recommended action, the recommended action says, says date is March.
All right, if there's a question, we, let's just go ahead and amend it, just so, so I would need a motion to amend.
Am I understanding correctly, though, it's, it's the recommended action that needs, okay, I just, I got confused for a second then, okay.
So Ken made a motion to amend it to say May thirty first, twenty twenty.
Second.
Should that be twenty twenty five? All right. All right, and did I get a second?
Yes.
All right, all those in favor to amending the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, right, now we need to vote on it. Now we need to vote, so I need a motion to approve payment to Andrews and Price invoice dated May thirty first, twenty twenty five in the amount of two thousand nine hundred fifty five dollars as submitted.
Second.
Do we need to discuss it any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, number five, authorizing twenty twenty five real estate tax assessment appeals program as presented. Discussion?
Can we just, can this just be explained on what, what this will be doing? What, what are we entering into, I mean, I, I did read it, but it doesn't, so do we make it?
So every year, we send unauthorized resolution to the Washington County Tax Claim Bureau, identifying who our solicitor is. That solicitor then has power to do appeals on behalf of the district for real estate property values.
Is the board direct sending that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Horvitz, um, I've always had an issue with this in the past because we've never published what we're actually doing, and you could have young couples buying a house, and then it gets reassessed, and then they can no longer afford to buy the house because the payments are too high because of the increase in tax. Saying all that, I would make the motion to table this until we can present the Resolution Number Five to the public to be able to view, so they could see the exact details of what it is.
So Ken's made, uh, Mr. Laeger, sorry, has made a motion to table this motion.
I will tell you, it has to be submitted by July first in order for us to take advantage of any tax assessment appeals for the twenty five, twenty six school year.
Right.
So if we table it for next, until next month, we're tabling it for you.
All right, I'll take that motion off the table. Is there any way you could explain to the people what it says in the prices, so they know?
Yes, so the prior contract that we had with Andrews and Price, if the property value, um, was purchased at twenty five thousand dollars or more of what the assessed value was, they would go to the Tax Claim Bureau and ask for a reassessment of the property. So for example, if the assessed value right now is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the house sells, it sells for two hundred thousand. Andrews and Price would then go to the Tax Claim Bureau and ask them to reassess that property based on the new sales price. And they did that for any property that was over twenty five thousand dollars difference in the original assessed value and what it sold for. That over the past four or five years has netted the district almost four hundred thousand dollars in additional tax revenue.
And that was just automatic, that wasn't?
And that was automatic, yes.
The board doesn't?
Yes, they do it automatically, um.
Well, I think that's why I had asked, only if the board directs it, because by doing this, we're saying that.
Yes, this is your.
We'll say that, like for Carton Kramer, would be directed to continually do this.
We can create the terms of what the value difference is.
Yes.
They did twenty five thousand dollars with Andrews and Price. But remember, if we don't do any assessment appeals, when those properties sell for two hundred fifty thousand dollars and they're assessed at a hundred thousand, we're losing out on tax revenue.
Wouldn't it be the realtor's responsibility to let them know that it could be reassessed?
Reorders will not let them know because it's detrimental to their sales and commission.
Right.
And that's the problem is, we as a district have never been able to, at least that's, this is my opinion of the problem. We have never educated our community enough to know what's gonna happen when they purchase a property. Um, because the real estate agents will not tell them this, and they don't find out until they get a letter from the Washington County Assessment Office. And if their escrow account is, let's say, fifty dollars a month, and you increase their taxes, then their payment goes up, let's say, to a hundred dollars, that individual may not any longer be able to afford that house. I agree with during the reassessments, I would just like the numbers publicized so that residents know what it is. And under item number two of the resolution, it states, uh, whereas the recorded purchase price adjusted by the applicable common value ratio was twenty five thousand. Is that the same as a twenty five thousand dollars? I thought the common ratio was different.
It is a little different than the dollar, big dollar figure.
Right.
Yes.
Is this, I guess I would defer to our solicitor, is this something that could have been made public prior to this evening? Would that be the board's choice to do that, or, because I know, you know, there's a difference between contracts and things like that. Certain things can't be, but is this something that could be?
A, a resolution, and, and so I, again, I'm still gaining my feelings here, and I'm speaking on things that I have one hour of experience on, so I say that cautiously. But, um, the resolution, I would have thought would have been public.
I, what, I, I'm asking, but wasn't, didn't we say that when we voted? We voted for this and passed it at the time, because I remember us talking about what the amount was gonna be, if it was twenty five thousand more, or fifty thousand more, or whatever. So didn't we at the time say that we wanted it to be publicized? It seems like to me we did.
I, I don't remember.
I don't recall that conversation.
I, I don't remember, Ms. Shingle, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Well, it comes up every year.
Yeah, but I think.
But we have people coming in and out of the district too, my apologies.
Um, I think, though, what Mr. Laeger is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but what he's asking for is if we can keep it publicized, like if we're putting it on our website somewhere, or the, the terms and conditions, so that people who are considering moving into the district have that information available to them when they're looking at houses, um, so that they know it's a possibility. Am I misunderstanding that, Mr. Laeger?
No, we need to be able to educate our residents that are buying houses in our district, that they're gonna get their taxes reassessed at a certain level. Then that gives them the option whether they buy the house or don't. Um, so in essence, yes, you're right. The, I'll go back to this, common level ratios, twenty five thousand dollars. Is there any way you could give me a ballpark?
So common.
About what that might be based upon the value of the sale?
Common level, level ratio is a ratio that compares a county's base year assessments to the current market values of property.
Right.
So twenty five thousand, that's what we had determined, some, determined years ago, apparently, that if it's sold for more than twenty five thousand dollars, compared to what that base assessment was, we would appeal it.
At one time when we originally did this years ago, it was twenty five thousand, and then I don't know, at some time it was dropped, and then at some time it picked up, was a hundred thousand, and now it's twenty five thousand. So I just want the public to know that if you buy a house that is appraised, or you pay more than, you pay more than twenty five thousand dollars than what it's currently assessed at, but definitely will be reassessing your property and your taxes will go up, basically.
Correct.
That's the norm in every school.
Wait, isn't it a given that when the research is done, their, their taxes go up? I didn't think that was the way that worked.
It's, it's my, it's not a given, so, um, you will meet, uh, one of my associates at my firm, Lee Delicker, who does all of our tax assessment work, fantastic at it, and he will take a look at all of the properties that have, um, been purchased sold in your school district. He'll come, um, with a list of those in an executive session because it is a litigation item. Um, and then we'll use that threshold of that twenty five thousand to help guide, but then this board will assist in making the final determination. Then it'll be up to the court too, whether it's, what the court feels about the matter. We're not gonna have the final say as a school district, we're going to obviously appeal that assessment value. But, um, you know, the court could say, no, McGuffey School District, you're wrong, um, we're gonna keep the value as what it was, so.
But the language wouldn't be, your taxes will go, but they may go.
They may go up, they may, they may, but, but the court will obviously have the final decision on that.
Ms. Solicitor, that's, that, that's the norm for every school district.
That is the norm for every school district, absolutely.
We're not doing anything any.
You are not, you are not doing anything different than any other district at all.
If it's published, it's somewhere on the website or somewhere so people know.
Mr. Laeger is asking that we do something different and publicize.
You, you could put, I mean, we would work on the wording, because it would be like, if you do this, we are absolutely going to appeal. But, yeah, we could work on some guidance, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, number four, as presented, providing up to a four hundred and ninety dollar and forty six cents Homestead-Farmstead exclusion for those residents of the McGuffey School District that have been approved for the property tax relief by the Washington County Assessment Office and meet all qualifying conditions.
No move?
No move, second.
Discussion?
So they have, they've been approved, then they have to meet the qualifications. Do they have to, like, apply to meet the qualifications?
They have to apply to be approved for Homestead-Farmstead. Qualifications could vary from year to year because it's based on the amount of funding they're getting from the state, and we run that through a formula to see what the, uh, least amount of assessed property value is for. For this year, it's around thirty five thousand dollars. So if your property is assessed less than thirty five thousand dollars, and you were already approved for Homestead-Farmstead, you won't see the Homestead.
No, I think my question was more about, like, do they have to do anything else? They've already sought approval, if they've been approved, then they will get notification that they qualify or they don't qualify, correct?
Their tax bill, if they get, their real estate tax bill will show the Homestead-Farmstead.
This is an area where I think we need to educate our community better, because I think there's a general lack of understanding. Based on the name, Homestead-Farmstead, I think a lot of people don't understand what that is and who can apply. Um, so I, that's an area where I think we should try to get more information out.
It usually comes with the taxes, when you do your taxes, that's the question.
We do get every year from the Tax Bureau a list of residents that we are to send, or send them to set up cases due because they currently aren't. So we do that every December.
Any further discussion?
For further clarification, this is what was proposed in the budget, we are now approving the amount.
This is the approval of us allowing the taxpayers to have the offset of the Homestead-Farmstead.
Okay, that's, okay, thank you.
Mr. President, one last thing.
Yes.
Just some clarification, because I know there was some, some confusion several meetings ago. Once you apply for the Homestead-Farmstead Act, you do not have to reapply every year. Once you apply, it stays.
Which is why I think we need to be better at educating people, because they don't think they understand.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the mill and lease agreement between Blueprints Head Start and McGuffey School District at Clayville Elementary School for a one-year period as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, so this is approving both, like, they're on one motion, instead of approving the mill agreement on one and then the lease on another. I know, I know why it's like that, but, um, I know last year I had asked about whether or not we could, um, negotiate rent prices, the fees, has, has, has any of that happened?
Actually, this contract last year was thirty six hundred, and it's now forty eight hundred. They are flat funded from the state to run this program, so they don't have a lot of money to increase the lease payment to us. Um, in, in my mind, forty eight hundred is better than thirty six hundred, and you can't get money if it's not there, obviously.
Right.
And, and the, the options are, we take what we get, or we don't have the lease at all with them, which does a disservice to our community.
Right, and, because I'll just, Clayville and Joe Walker.
Yes.
It, that higher dollar amount, instead of, I know it doesn't matter where it's going, I get that, but it's not like they get a certain amount for Clayville and then a certain amount for Joe Walker, correct? It's just they get this lump sum, and they give this much to this district, and this much, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the one-year mill and lease agreement between Blueprints Pre-K Program and the McGuffey School District for a classroom at Joe Walker Elementary, effective July first, twenty twenty five, as presented.
No move?
Second.
Discussion?
I just wanna say thank you for following through with negotiating. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to approve C S M Consulting Incorporated to provide E-rate category one and two services at a cost of thirty five hundred dollars, no increase over last year.
Second.
Discussion?
No increase, uh, it's amazing, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to adopt the final budget of the McGuffey School District in the amount of thirty seven million, two hundred and eighty eight thousand, five hundred and sixty four dollars for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
No move? Second.
Ms. Iverson, roll call.
Wait, before we do that, I just, I wanted to just say, this is what I was asking earlier at the committee meeting that I think nobody understood. My question was, did you have a change in the recommendation for tonight's vote on the final budget? That's what I was asking, and your answer is no? Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Ms. Iverson.
Um, Mr. Grove? Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Laeger?
Yes.
Ms. Varnett?
Yes.
Ms. Shingle?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, I was trying to put this back and forth between the thumbs and my laptop.
The budget.
Approve the budget.
Yes. But it includes the tax increase?
Okay, yes.
Mr. Bananas?
Yes.
Ms. Fry?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries nine zero. The facilities use report?
President, um, school community, uh, was school for two times in the month of May, nineteen times community. A lot of girls shoot basketball, we had a baccalaureate, very nice ceremony, by the way, uh, the day before graduation, relive the life, the inaugural vet year of the high school. And then, uh, also, we helped to, I think, make better the national bike festival.
Fantastic. The budget expenditure report for the month of May, twenty twenty five, is presented for your review. The cafeteria reports for the month of May, twenty twenty five, is presented for your review. review. The P-card spending report for May, twenty-twenty-five, is presented for your review. Madam Solicitor, do you have a report?
Well, I, I will just introduce myself, um, Rebecca Hall, I'm a partner at the law firm of Vice Perkort Kramer. It's truly a pleasure to be here, um, just to say a couple words, because I know that this has kind of been an ongoing debate over the past couple meetings. Um, I'm pleased to be here, um, I'm pleased to work with this board. I, I want to achieve great things with this board for this district, but we can only do that together. The school district, um, entity is my client, but as a board and as administration, you're the constituents with whom the district acts through. And so because of that, as a solicitor, I'm bound to implement the will of the board, and that's the majority. And it is my goal that this board can come together, continue to achieve wonderful things for the kids of McGuffey School District. I'm a resident of Washington County, um, very proud resident, um, a farmer, um, and I love working with communities down here, I have multiple school districts in this area, so give me a little time to catch up, um, you know, you guys have handed me a whole school district to learn and read about, and I will do that diligently, but I will need your help in catching up on the history, um, and I'm only as good as the information I can get, so I'm excited to meet with Dr. Oberg and the administration and, and see what I can do to assist, um, in carrying forth the will of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Solicitor. You're welcome. Again.
Thank you.
Uh, Western Area Career Technology Report, Ms. Fry?
I had forgotten my notes on my desk at home, so I apologize, um, but we did meet since our last meeting, and, um, we meet again next week, so, um, what I will do is I will provide additional, from what I didn't bring with me this week, and I apologize about that, I will make up for it next month.
All right, thank you, Ms. Fry. Pennsylvania School Board Association Report, Ms. Shingle?
Okay, I'm, I really have to say, there was a lot of things last time, and we didn't get to go over them. One of the big ones, and I know that Dr. Oberg did forward this in his emails to us, was that survey. I do hope that you all did that survey, because the survey is there to help them better serve us, so, please, I hope that you did that. It's too late now, it had to be done, and we, we ended up canceling that meeting. Okay, um, on those ten-minute reports we use, on the countdown, this one for the seventeenth, you still can get it if you go to the website, it is on a breakdown between the difference of policy and administrative regulations. It's really good, it's, you know, ten minutes long, I really encourage you, please take the time, I've tried to forward these, but that never seems to work, the link never works, I guess you, all I can do is tell you, and you go on, log on to your, uh, PSBA, and you can find it, and that is something worth listening to. They're, they're all very good, but that was something that I wanted to share. They also have sent an update that every single person in the community, but especially school board people, should be calling their legislators, you know, and we should, that's been brought up many, many times, that's something we need to be doing, and they're sending us reminder, please do this. They have a registration that's open now for fall things, these are both onsite things, so if, they would, you would have to travel there, but one is October the nineteenth, and it is for a leadership conference, and the other one is onboarding new directors, and that one is for September the twelfth. The thing I want to mention there, just because it says new directors, doesn't mean it's not worthwhile information. Sometimes maybe you've been serving for a while, and you think you know all this, but you know what, I find every single time you go through it, you learn something new. So I really want to encourage you, they're offering this to us, we're paying for it, so please take advantage of it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shingle. At this time, we will take public comment on non-agenda and agenda items.
Mr. President, there's only one person on the list, you can sort it out.
Thank you.
See ya.
Yes, Bob, have the time, please. Becky Jordan, Buffalo Township, um, I'd just like to speak tonight about the word respect, and it goes both ways. So, to kind of counter some of what Mrs. Jackson had to say tonight, first, I want to apologize for threatening to sue the district last month, but I was pretty heated over what happened. I would never want to cause damage or any harm to the district, but I will say, when you sit on this side of the table and you watch the lead people have side conversations while you're speaking, it's pretty frustrating, and it's pretty disrespectful. And I will say, on Mrs. Walker's behalf, she was at her second meeting here, this was a woman who was pushed over the edge, she was frustrated, she has issues that she's repeatedly tried to address, she came out here out of pure frustration. I don't agree with the language, but it's her choice to use the word she did, and I will tell you, knowing her, she filtered herself, so you should all think about that. She did filter herself. Do I agree with it, her approach? No, but I will also say, you used the word bullying when you were talking about the board and things happening between board members, but I know I have stood before you for years, talking about the bullying issues in McGuffey School District. I sat with Dr. Oberg personally in his office, he gave me an hour of his time, we spoke about bullying. Every time I bring it up in a meeting, the best I get is a legal definition of bullying. You feel bullied as adults? That's how these kids feel tenfold, and that's where Ms., that's where Tiffany Walker was at. She addressed the board, she came up here angry in the first place, she saw a side conversation coming up, I watched the meeting several times, I didn't want to speak out of turn here, but Mr. Kern, you kept addressing her, you kept addressing her, you were taking her time, you were frustrated, you were mad at what she had to say, and you need to learn to sit there when your feelings are hurt, and just be quiet. You need a thicker skin, you provoked her, and you pushed her over the edge. That's all you had to do was say nothing, and what happened would not have happened. So you want to talk about respect, how about we do it both ways? I'll be more respectful when I stand up here and speak before you, stop your side conversations, listen to people, what people have to say. Fake it, fake it if you have to, you don't have to want to listen to me, but you could at least make it look like you are. I'm not going anywhere, my grandkids are here, I will fight for what I believe in to the end, and you guys need to start having more respect for each other, you need to have, start having more respect for the people in this audience. When you lead by example, you'll see it will come back to you. We will be more respectful when you all are. So with that said, I want to thank you all, I do appreciate everything you do, but you need to appreciate the fact that we come here on our time, and we dedicate ourselves to the same cause, what's best for these students. So hear us, and again, if you don't want to, at least fake it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Items for discussion by board members?
I would like to say that, um, to Mrs. Jackson's over time, and I accept your apology, um, I do think we have to work together, it's just like your marriage, or your, your relationship with your girlfriend, or boyfriend, or what have you, you have to work at it every day, and I think that we all can do better. Um, I left the meeting, the last meeting that we had, very hurt, very upset, um, I do my best not to take things personal, I went to church that Sunday, and we had a sermon about how, you know, you, you put on the armor of God, and, and you work, you're stronger together, and you don't have to be a Christian to do that, you can be stronger together as a team, whether you believe in, in the Lord and the Bible or not, and that's, that's what I'm asking of this board. I, I did not believe we would be able to do that, and, till we had some new council, um, we do not have that, we have a chance to prove to our community that we can set aside our differences, we can be respectful to each other, it's going to be work, but I think we all deserve that for ourselves and for each other, and I look forward to moving forward, um, with what we can do in this district. Thank you.
I would just like to say that, um, it's not the solicitor's responsibility, nor duty, or obligation to unite the board, that's not her role, any solicitor's role. That's only going to happen when we quit working against each other, that's really what the crux of it is. And when you have little faction here and a little faction there, and you have a board member who's running rogue and doing things on his own, and other board members who are left in the dark with things, and, you know, and we're using these times to, to get in little personal digs, and that's where the problem comes, and that only changes through And it starts with little things, like getting rid of the public gotcha moments, which really serve no purpose than to try to humiliate somebody in public. I know everybody hates this whole idea of chain of command, but that really comes from biblical tenets. In the, in the Christian church, we talk about the creed of the Christian church, one of them is speak where the Bible speaks, and be silent where the Bible's silent, the beauty of that is, the Bible's not silent on much. It gives us a guideline for how to handle conflict resolution, and step one is, you have a private conversation with the person. There's a lot of things that are said publicly that would never have to be in a public meeting, and quite frankly, should never be. If I have a problem with Dr. Oberg, and I don't understand why he wasn't present in something, I should call him and have that conversation with him. If I have a problem with Mrs. Fry about something, I should call her and have a conversation with her. That shouldn't come into the public venue, unless that private conversation doesn't resolve the issue, and a mediation with somebody else doesn't resolve the issue, then you bring it to the public forum. That's just one example of ways that we could improve, but to be clear, the improvement starts with each one of us, not the solicitor.
Any other items for discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Leisure.
Well, they, they've been putting out paper copies for us, yeah, that's what I use too.
Any other items for discussion? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Leisure.
I made a comment, um, I don't even know when, a couple meetings ago, I think I was supposed to make this comment that I'm making now, last meeting, and I don't think I did, but I, I, I don't remember, so, all that being said, Dr. Oberg, I stated that you wasn't at the high school, and didn't visit the PTO moms whenever they put on their luncheon. I apologize to you in executive session for that, because I did not know that you was not in the building, you was on a field trip with the fifth grade, so I want everybody out there in the audience to know that I was wrong, Dr. Oberg wasn't in the building to address them. I assumed he was, I was wrong, and Dr. Oberg, I apologize.
Ms. Leisure, I, um, I accept your apology, you're already forgiven, I've forgiven you for that comment, um, so I thank you for saying that. Any other items for discussion? Need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned at nine forty-nine PM. Aye, Mr. Thomas?